Okay.
Motion to open zoning board of appeals meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think you have to go roll call because Emile's...
Hi.
You have to roll call because Emile's remote.
Emile?
Aye.
Okay.
And the rest of us, sorry, Sherman. You have to roll call us all.
Okay, Marguerite?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Sherman?
Aye.
Okay, motion to open case number forty-three oh one.
Motion to open case number forty-three oh one.
Second.
Emile?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Public hearing will be held in Town Hall Conference Room, the room three oh one, third floor, Ten Pearl Street on September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven thirty P. M. on petition of Rachel Osagi.
Osagi.
Osagi?
Yes.
It's the Japanese way. Case number forty-three oh one for a special permit under the town of Stoughton zoning bylaw, November eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, as amended section three point one point four, table of use regulations, residential, item number five, conversion of existing AS off September eighth, nineteen seventy. Dwelling to a structure of multifamily dwelling provided the total number of units in the converted dwelling structure shall not exceed four dwelling units. In order to allow for a conversion of an existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling located at thirty-seven Rose Glen Street, further identified in assesses plan fifty-five, lot eighty-nine, and GB zone in said Stoughton. Any person designer received further notice concerning this petition is provided to General Roads of the Zoning Board of Appeals file a written request containing his or her name and address with the board. Assistant or his representative or any other persons designed to be heard in this matter should appear at time and place as it may. Sherman F. O'Channon was in the Patriot Ledger Daily September sixth and September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Would you like to come up and tell us what you'd like to do? Whoever wants to speak.
Yeah, yep. Come on, okay. Okay, motion to accept the answers to question eight as written and to waive the meeting of the abuttes.
Emile?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Sherman? Okay. Jeff?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Eli Saman. I'm the designer engineer on the project with Ms. Okae... Psaki?
Yeah.
Psaki. What she likes to do is to go from a single family to two family. And during the design review with her, she needed more space. So she would like at some point to have more room and upgrade, improve her residence. So she came about, I spoke with her about having addition in the back. And after evaluation, the whole destruction on the second floor mainly, the second part of the second floor where the kind of the way it's framed, you got so many dormers and headrooms, it's very tight and it's very kind of, you don't have enough daylight. So after going back and forth with the with the design and the designer view, we came about to have take entire roof on the second floor and come up with the second floor, you know, so you'll have, she'll have enough headroom and also the addition to the first floor will give her more privacy and kind of more living space. And as you can see, I have my reduced copy. On the first, on the first floor, what she wants to do is to kind of bring a master bedroom, closet, and two bathroom, one full, one half. And by the same token, what we did is to have a separate mean of interest on the front and also a second mean of ingress of the second floor on the side as well. And she, with the design on the first floor, as you can see, she had like ample room to maneuver in her kitchen and then back to her master bedroom in the back. And the master bedroom in the back, kind of, she had a slider onto the deck in the back of the, the back of the house. And on second floor, and the thing is, on the first floor, the way she had it set up, or the way it was built, so to speak, you have the staircase leading from the first floor up to the second floor, kind of really outdated and not enough headroom. So we had to eliminate that existing staircase going from first to second floor and come with a new set stairs leading from the first floor to the basement floor, so to speak. And also we put, I can introduce another separate entrance from the first floor up to the second floor with a separate, with a separate staircase. And as you can see now, between the existing elevation of all, how many kind of dormers she has and was all over the place. So when I came about the design to take out all, all main roof up above and have a clean, clean structural appealing to the building. And with all this, we didn't, we didn't kind of go over the regulation. If you have, you can see on page or the plan, A one five, this is the present, or this is the proposed building, look away, A one five.
And A one two is the current?
We just say one and a half bass each.
Let me double check. Yes. No, I'm sorry, on, on the first floor, we have two full and one half. On the second floor, we have one full, one half.
Imagine we're on...
That's plan A one three.
Imagine we're on Town Square, is it?
Yes.
In Town Water.
Yeah, sure. So you're proposing two units. Are these like a first floor unit, second floor unit, or is there like a front and back?
No, no, first floor unit, second floor unit.
Okay. And what, what would be the parking situation for the two units? Is there a picture in here I should be looking at? What was, what was your question? The parking?
Okay, no, that's parking. That was my question too.
I, I don't have, I don't have picture at the moment, but on the left side of the house, we got almost double parking. It goes deep about more than like twenty-five, thirty feet deep.
So how many vehicles are, would be able to park?
At least four.
At least four. Trying to see the, any pictures here?
I see the plot plan.
This right here? I see the porch, this is the current footprint. So it'll be going up there. Oh yeah, just like right here, last page.
Yeah.
Do you know if the building is de-lighted?
We're gonna have it tested. We will have it tested before this election.
Any further questions for me right now?
Gary?
I don't have any questions right now.
Marguerite?
Are you planning to have the utility separate for each unit?
Yes, yeah.
And if I'm looking at the plans correctly, there's three bedrooms upstairs and two downstairs, is that right?
I believe you're right, yes.
And you don't need any variances, right? You fit within the requirements? If we were to impose a condition that this remains as a two-family, is that a problem? So the, the regulation could allow you to go as high as four, but typically when we have these before us, we kind of leave them, the person with what they're showing us.
I understand, but she was, she would love to do that. Unfortunately, with the funding is not available to support our project.
So if we were to just, to put a condition on this permit that says it can't be more than two families, would that be a problem? That, that would be fine? Are you, I went by the house today. Are you, you're doing some of that construction now, is that right? Or something was, it looked like there was some damage to the house.
Yeah, so we were called down there last week for an issue with construct, demolition going on. I don't think she knew what, what had transpired. Her contractor came in to pull a permit and he wasn't given one because his license is revoked. So he left, we never saw him again until we got the call that they've been at her house. So I don't think he knew that at all, right? Yeah, so, so we, we shut off power and we shut off gas and we're waiting for someone to come in now.
Okay.
Pull a permit.
But you're not, are you, you're not, it didn't even look like it was livable anymore, is it?
Yeah, I'm, you're gonna have to come up here, because...
We can't hear the recording is the problem. Here.
Three quarters of the roof is gone by.
Yeah, it looked that way from the, from what I could see from the street.
I did not know what was going on.
Especially you're gonna have to identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. My name is Rachel Osagi. I've lived on that street for almost twenty years, that house. So actually, what happened is that my kids are growing up and I can't climb the stairs anymore, had surgery, then I wanted to convert to two family where I can have like my own living space downstairs when I get to retirement. That's why I wanted that variant done, so. For this one that happened, so I got this contractor, I did actually take like pictures of licenses and, you know, that is not my area of specialty, no, I'm not a builder, not a contractor, so. And I asked him and I said, he said, if I'm ready, he would be ready, but I should start moving, that he was going to pull the permit. And I said, fine, then I started looking for, I told my neighbors I was going to get places to like stay, but he didn't tell me it was going to start right away. I thought maybe, usually I know that the permit has to be pulled, but not of a sudden, I didn't know what was going on. Naturally, my neighbor was the one that called me, I didn't know what, it was like, what? It was like, nothing should go on here, I'm not even like. It was when we came to the building department that we realized that, not knowing that it's done, some damage to the house, so. And I already gave you some money to buy materials, but I just hope that once this process gets through, I'll be ready to start off early, so that I can move back home, you know.
But no one's living there right now?
No, nobody. Just me and my daughters, because my sons are all grown, they've left home.
Okay, I don't have any other questions right now.
I have one more follow-up question. I was thinking about the, the parking question I asked before, right? I was kind of looking at the picture and, you know, I really can't see, you know, very good, right, from there, but just wondering if you're aware how many parking spaces would be required for two units as opposed to one unit? You know, are you able to meet that requirement? And are you able for the vehicles to, you know, come and go freely?
Yeah, I don't see any issue for this. If you, if it's required for us to provide more detailed site plan, I'd work on that.
Okay.
To show the parking aspect.
Do you know how many spaces are required?
For three bedroom, I think three, two bedroom is two.
So that would be at least five?
Five, yeah.
Yeah, and earlier you said there's only like room for three or four, so that's why I'm a little concerned, maybe I can do more.
I can look it up and provide whatever is necessary to meet the, meet the requirements.
That's kind of the only thing that, that's really standing out to me, you know, just to kind of have a picture of, you know, how that would work. Because, you know, the lots are a little bit smaller in that, that part of town, I just want to make sure that there's a way for the vehicles to go.
I understand, I understand. How soon you want this? You want?
We meet every two weeks.
Well, yeah, but there's nothing on the agenda for the third. And I'm not gonna be here. So you're talking the nineteenth? I mean, the fifth. It's on the fifth. I keep seeing the two, it's the fifth.
Unless, I mean, I guess the other option is we, Jack, have you been out to the property?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, do you think there's a way to put enough parking spaces on that property?
Well, they're gonna need seven, so.
Seven?
It's just a question of...
They're sending it to the bank, how space?
Can we make it a condition of the permit? I guess that's maybe a question for my...
Yeah, I mean, I think we can. It's really a question of, if Jack thinks it's feasible, then I'd feel more comfortable doing that if he's unsure about it and we really needed to see a plan, then.
Yeah.
But she's, I think she's got plenty of room to put the parking that she needs. She'll, you know, put them along the side and then put them over here in the back, but I think there's room for seven.
I mean, yeah, there's also an equal amount of space on the other side of the building as well. I mean, there's probably a lot of different options, in my opinion.
We just can't, we just can't give too much impervious area, like all asphalt.
Right. So, yeah, I think we could condition it if we think, if, I mean, I'm comfortable relying on Jack's feeling that this is feasible here, but it would need to be a pre-building permit condition, for sure. Obviously, the work that's being done has to stop, which...
Yeah, they're going.
Yeah.
I feel really bad for you, but, yeah.
Better for straightening.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm good.
Emile, you have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions?
Excuse me, yeah, as in a butter, is this a time I couldn't make asking questions or?
Yep. Just identify yourself.
Get there. My name is Barbara Avini. I live at forty-one Rose Glen Street, which is the house to the right of Rachel's, which abuts the Avini. And this is a picture of the driveway, so there's no way they're gonna do seven cars unless they go back into the yard and take some of the backyard, which then becomes, are we living in a complex? There's no grass back there, there's no, it's not a family unit anymore, it's a complex with no grass and just, and just because this is going on, have they checked the plot plan and make sure that the driveway that's existing is not pat on my property as well? I want to make sure it's wide enough and I don't want cars parking under my bedroom window, you know? So I just want to make sure that these things are done the way they're supposed to be done and that there's not encroaching too much on our property. I mean, you could get four in the driveway as it exists, but I don't even know, like when I tried to put a deck up, they said the plot plan wasn't correct. I couldn't put the deck up the way I wanted to because the property lines weren't the way they were supposed to, so I just kind of want to make sure it's okay on the other
Can I ask a question, Sherman, on that?
Sure.
Are you, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your names. Are you David, Terran, Zoney?
No, no.
Okay.
No, David is the, David is the surveyor, land surveyor.
I mean, it looks like the property was surveyed in two thousand and twenty-two.
Yes.
So those plot plan, plot, those lot lines should have been...
Yeah, I bought my house in thirty years ago, so it's, yeah, that's why I just, with how this happened, I just wanted to make sure it was all, you know, taken care of.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand it's, you weren't aware that was happening, that house doesn't look like it was in, it doesn't look like it's in good shape right now.
No, it's not. I'm actually concerned if there's another hurricane or something, that the way they have that front part of it plop will not stay up like that. And it's not your fault, you know, it's not your fault, I'm just, you know, concerned about our property as well. And make sure it's done correctly, so it's not, either one of us don't have a problem when we go to sell, you know?
So it looks like the, I feel comfortable with the plot, the plan, it's recent and it's stamped by a professional land surveyor, that's what we would require.
Okay. This one's checked out. And is that, is that wide enough for seven cars would be a lot in there right now?
Right, that's what we would potentially condition.
Okay, those are just my concerns, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? What's the wish of the board?
I mean, if we are interested in conditioning the parking plan, then I believe there is three, two or three conditions. I wasn't sure if you wanted the testing for lead to be a condition, Jeff?
That's, I don't think I can condition that.
It's required for the building code, right?
Right.
Yeah, but everything's gone. There's nothing left in the house.
Oh, so there, there's gonna need...
I mean, I would check for asbestos on piping, but that's the only thing you could check for.
Got it.
There's, there's no trim left in the house.
Okay. So it's really not even gonna be feasible?
Yeah, no.
Got it.
No, you make them do something that's, doesn't think it makes sense.
It would cost them money for, something that's not needed.
Okay. So then I had two conditions, the, it remains as a two-family and that prior to a building permit, a detailed site plan would be provided to the building commissioner for approval that all parking requirements can be met.
Yep, I have a second, if that's your motion.
I can read my motion, motion to approve a special permit with those two conditions.
All in favor? Jeff?
Aye.
Sherman, okay.
Gary?
Aye.
Emile? We'll, we'll write a decision. It will probably be on the nineteenth, we'll vote on it. And you can talk with the building inspector. But people have a twenty-day, you have twenty-day period that you have to wait. If it's falling down, you might want to fix it.
Don't need permit for that, right?
I mean, you can talk to the building inspector, too, about proceeding at a risk that is allowed by law now, but that's your risk, that there could be an appeal and that holds everything on.
What if it does fall?
Something you gotta talk to the building department about.
All we can do is plaque of the building.
Yeah, but right now it's all about two-by-fours that are nailed together, what's left of the roof, you've seen it.
The good thing with what's left of the roof doesn't really catch a lot of wind, so hopefully, if the wind's coming from the back, that would be the issue.
You're decent, which you were coming into the season. That's my...
Yeah, I mean, if you want, I can meet you there and we can come up with a make-safe plan to come up, you know, figure out how, I mean, if it falls, it falls, there's nothing there, so. But we can, we can come up with what you want to do with the roof, you know?
Can we do something in the meantime to like put something across the driveway so little kids don't go in that driveway? Because it's very dangerous at this point. I myself caught a couple of kids up the street that were running barefoot, they chased their dog, little dog, into the driveway, they went to chase it and I screamed at them because they were barefoot and the dog was, obviously a dog, and there's, the driveway is very dangerous right now. There's something we can do in the interim, just to...
Well, we can have her sweep it.
Yeah, just clean it up or whatever, have somebody just take, clean it up so that's not a danger to animals.
That's what's concerned about the kids, because a lot of them don't speak English, so when I yelled in my daddy voice, they understood. But God help them if they're running their barefoot, I mean, or tripped or something because there's nails sticking up in this glass everywhere and just a hazard, so. I'm concerned about them, I don't care how it looks, I don't want my lawn at this point. Something to consider, that's all.
You're all set?
You're all set, yeah.
Thank you.
If I can make a recommendation, there's a gentleman question. I'll talk to Rochelle and I'll have her clean the driveway and perhaps we can put like temporary fencing.
You can put temporary fencing, one, I can acquire it, but you can put it...
Just for safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, temporarily.
Prevent something from happening. I'm not complaining.
I, I know, I know.
I'm concerned, that's all.
I know, but we don't, we don't want anybody to get hurt.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next case?
Thank you.
So I guess this has to be me? I guess this one has to be me, so, sorry. Make a motion to open case number forty-three zero zero.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So I, I saw the transcript on, I mean, I saw the video on the TV and listened to the video and I signed the paper, so I'll be sitting on this case.
I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Is that?
Okay. Entertained the motion. We had the motion. Everybody voted for it. And hopefully you talked with Mr. Erickson. We've come to an agreement or something, so. I'm not going to read this back end because we already written it, so just explain to us what you want to do and how you're going to do it.
Oh, okay. First of all, good evening. I wasn't here the last time. My son was here. Caesar de Silva, the architect, designer on this project.
Okay, you're going to have to identify yourself.
That's what I said. Caesar de Silva, the architect, on this project. And I'm here on the behalf of my client, Mrs. and Mr. Ellis. And we are before you for a variance of the side lot that as of right, we have 20 feet, but we would like to encroach with 15 feet on the right side. The reason why we would do that and come before you and we didn't go towards the back is because the back has, the soil condition doesn't permit and is like, has a lot of ledges and it's full of ledges in the back and... Jack, I think you went by there, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is there in different locations on it. And I apologize, the last time I wasn't clear on explaining, but I appreciate the opportunity this time to explain to you the actual condition of the site, that I froze being on, you know, on the phone. I was actually in Europe then I, but this is the condition that brings us before you.
Okay. Questions? Jeff?
I do not have any questions.
Karen?
I don't have any questions.
I agree.
Just, so I drove by as well today and I saw, I thought that was a rock, so I appreciate the picture. There's ledge on the left side at the far edge of the property, but is there enough space to be able to build the addition that you're looking for?
Correct, correct.
And this rock is right up against your deck?
Right against the fence. Actually, the addition will get close to it.
Yeah, but it's not going to require you to do any blasting?
Blasting. That's why we couldn't go any farther.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Emile?
No questions.
Do you need to see the picture, Emile?
It would be nice, but...
Can we do that?
Picture a really big rock.
That's really hard to see.
Can you see it at all?
I mean, I could see the house. But I did look, I looked up the house on Google Maps, so I have an idea, but I can't really see that picture.
Can we enter these pictures into the, into our record?
Yeah.
Keep them?
Yes, please. You can keep them, both of them if you want. It is more where this one comes from.
Okay. What's the wish of the board?
Well, I don't know who's on the phone.
Huh?
I don't know who's on the phone.
Oh, on the phone?
Yeah. Do they, are they here to say anything?
Is there somebody that wants to speak? There is? My neighbor.
Can't really hear her.
We can't hear you.
Very faintly. That's a little better.
You guys, anybody hear me?
Oh, much better.
Yep.
Okay, you got it, definitely. So I'm actually a neighbor of these lovely folks sitting before you. And my question is, during the construction, where will the equipment be placed? As far as, you know, construction materials, things such as that?
Right within the property and if you see, if we're building the addition, it's here and closer to the house. Are you directly on the back? Yeah, we, yes.
Yes, I'm directly on the back, yes.
We are far from the back because we have 178 feet. We're not going to go that far. So whatever the equipment is near to the excavation where we're doing the addition and towards the front of this property. It will be all within... On the side, within the, within their property. We have enough space there to use the, the side. We got to use it for access going back and forth towards the back.
Okay.
Because we're going to be, so we wouldn't be blocking the, the side. And on the front of the house, to the right is where we would be putting the stock of the lumber.
Okay, you got it. Because on the side, there's trees, there's vegetation, so there won't be anything on the side, correct?
That if we put anything on the side, then we'll have no access to the back with the machine, with the excavator.
Oh, all right. You want to? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay. Hearing nobody else? You have no problems with that now, Jack?
No, 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 no.
What's the wish of the board?
I mean, I, having driven by it and having seen the pictures now and understanding that you've actually provided us with the requirement, information that conforms to the requirements of the law, I'm comfortable making some findings around that. I think this is, there is some unique circumstances in this property. Not just the ledge, but I do think that looking at the property, I mean, there really isn't, it's a, it's not a corner lot, but it essentially is because there's, there's this strip here that is incapable of being built upon. So we don't, we have like, in addition to the fact that we're going to the right, we also have...
On this, we'll be able to explain that all in the white over there. Is that the same?
Thank you, yeah. So we have, you know, even less of an impact on, on the abutters as a result of that. So I guess I'd probably make both of those findings in this case. That would be my feeling, but you guys can let me know what you're thinking.
Oh, that's fine.
Looks like we're happy with what they've found.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we make a finding that the property, the ledge that exists in the back of the property makes it impossible for the, for an addition to be constructed in the rear of the property. And that we also make a finding that the property is unique in that it is not essentially a corner lot, but is located next to a piece of land that is incapable of being built on, which is on the corner of Sunrise Terrace. And so there would not be any direct abutter impacted by the proposed addition.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Emile?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
I hope so. Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm aye, so. Okay, same thing goes.
Wait, then we, I have to make a finding that, I have to make a motion that we grant the variance as requested. I think it's, is it five feet? A five-foot side yard variance? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, five feet variance from 20 to 15.
Yep. Five-foot side yard variance for the property is requested.
Second.
All in favor? Jeff?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Emile?
Aye.
I think ours will still be quite a decision.
Yeah, you're all set, well, yeah. He's explaining what we got, it's going to happen.
We'll write a decision, but you can't really start building until, what do you say, September 19th? No, October 19th?
Plus 20.
Twenty days.
We'll write it, and then it's 20 days after that, so it'd be in November sometime.
October 18th, yeah.
What's October?
Yes, oh, the 19th.
So there is a 20-day grace period.
Right. But as she said...
Again, you can talk to the building inspector. The law does allow you to construct at your own risk, but you have, that's up to you to decide to do. You can, if you wait out the 20-day appeal period after the decision is issued, there is no way that someone can come back and object to this, so.
Okay, we'll do that. We waited until now, 20 days.
Well, you know, you're actually talking, it's 20 days from the 18th.
19th.
The 19th, whatever, so that's, you're in the November. And then, then all of a sudden, the ground freezes and it's a different problem.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have, um...
I think this was some info for the record, too. Thank you.
We have two seconds, one minute.
Nope. Bye, Jack.
Is it okay if I point out that my name is spelled wrong in the minutes?
What's that?
Should I point out if my name is spelled wrong in the minutes?
Yeah. Doesn't matter. They're going to sue you, they're going to sue you.
Oh, I don't know who this Jeffrey E R Y guy is. It's not me. It's okay.
So I, I can't vote on either, but Emile can vote on one of them.
Which ones are we talking about?
The August 3rd and the August 22nd.
And I wasn't...
Only the three of us were at August 3rd. And then...
I thought we re-did these, so that, didn't we, to what the...
We did them, but then found out we needed four to vote.
Right, so we had to wait until...
Yeah, so we voted only three here on August 3rd, right? The three of us. Then we revoted on this one on...
22nd.
August 22nd, but we had tried to reschedule it for August 10th and we couldn't do it.
Couldn't get enough people on.
So there was actually, then there actually wasn't a meeting then?
Not on the 10th. There was one on the 3rd and then there was one on the 22nd.
22nd is when we finally had everyone.
Couldn't do that meeting because there wasn't enough.
Okay, so we had myself, Gary, Jeff, and Emile. Okay. First one.
For which one, this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Make a motion, we accept the minutes from August 22nd, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Who is there?
Jeff?
Aye.
Emile?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, Emile is there. Aye.
And myself. Okay. So we're accepting these notes. We're accepting the other notes.
Oh, is that the other one, the August 10th?
Yeah, the other one is the August 3rd. And we only have three members.
Right. So how do, how do...
You can vote to approve the minutes with a quorum. You just couldn't take the votes with, that was the case, right?
Right, we couldn't do the decisions.
Because they were variances?
Because they were, yeah.
Yeah, so you can, a vote to approve minutes only requires a quorum of the board, which you have with three of you.
Yeah, but do we, no, but the problem, the problem is we accepted something that we couldn't accept.
Right.
So does that have to...
We've revoked it on...
But then you revoked it, so then you see, yeah, you're okay.
Okay, then I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from August 3rd, 2023.
Second.
Okay, can I, can I go along with it? So...
Yeah, because the minutes are just reflecting the actions, like what you did and then, then you corrected the insufficient vote by voting again. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're going to take a vote. Aye.
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 Okay.
Emile, you want to make that motion that you know about?
Was he there? No, he wasn't there.
No, for tonight.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to, um, okay?
There you go. Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
See you, Emile.